All right, we've been given the signal that all is clear. So, beginning at 6:37 PM on June the 18th, 2024, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Secretary Richardson in leading us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, I would remind everyone to silence their cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And we will now have a moment of silence. I ask that you please keep in your thoughts. Dr. Alan Sacks unfortunately passed away today. We have no opening ceremony tonight. We do have two public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is a public hearing on the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year budget and tax rate. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith and Ms. Moss.
Good evening, trustees. President Chapa, thank you very much. We're excited to have Ms. Darla Moss as our Chief Financial Officer here in Arlington ISD, and she'll be presenting information on the proposed budget for you before we hold the public hearing. Later in the agenda, you will be voting on the budget, but this is information that Darla has on the budget for you. We don't see the need to present it twice, so Darla will get us kicked off of the information now.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, President Chapa, trustees. I have just a few slides that we'll go through regarding the fiscal year 2025 budget. The purpose of this presentation is to adopt the budget for districts with the July 1 fiscal year. That date is June 30th. We're bringing that action item to you later tonight. As Dr. Smith said, Education Code requires the board to hold a public hearing to adopt the budget, and the following slides will provide information on the proposed tax rate and the proposed budgets to be brought to the board for approval. Our budget assumptions, we've shared this with you throughout the process, that average daily attendance used to calculate state funding for fiscal year 2025 is 47,299. Our taxable values are $44 billion. Our M&amp;O rate, .7869, and INS rate of .2907. The total tax rate we use for fiscal year '25 is 1.0776. We are basing the ADA on an estimated student enrollment of 53,551. Our staff count for general operating is 7,00545, which includes 847 vacancies. Our staff position count for all funds is 8,00613 with 1,027 vacancies. The basic allotment remains the same, 6,160 per student. That's what we used in the calculation for fiscal year 2025, and these are all the assumptions that we use in the proposed budget that you are about to see. On our tax rates, the M&amp;O rate for fiscal year 2024 was a total of 1.1156. The rate proposed in the notice to the public for fiscal year 2025 is the same as fiscal year 2024, which we've done for the past two or three years. We will not have the information to calculate the rate, the actual rate, until we receive information from TEA, which we'll get in August. .7869 for M&amp;O and .2907 for INS rates were used to estimate our tax collections as we built the fiscal year 2025 budget. That rate again is subject to change after we received the MCR from TEA. Our proposed budget revenue comparison, the fiscal year '25 proposed budget includes 601 million in revenue as compared to 593 million for the adopted budget for 2024. Several variables make up the difference, including the timing and amending the budget throughout the fiscal year, and it's also based on our actuals and the assumptions that we made at the time. Some of those variables include the homestead exemption increase from 40K to 100K, an increase in investment income that we received in 2024, additional whole harmless for levy loss due to the over 65 exemptions, a 10% increase in taxable values for '25, and there are reductions in '25 for our federal Medicaid, Shar's, and the loss of indirect cost revenue from our federal ESAR funds that we've received in the past three years. Our proposed budgets that we're bringing forth are on the screen, the General Operating Fund, Debt Service Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and Child Nutrition Fund. We're proposing a deficit of 25.4 million in the general fund. This includes the board-approved 4% general pay increase for teachers, librarians, and other employees. That impacts the general fund at about 16.8 million. And then there's the transfer that we have of 5.5 million that we're bringing from assigned fund balance for pre-kindergarten. The deficit will be covered by district reserves. We're proposing a balanced budget for the Debt Service Fund. Any potential surplus that we see in that fund will be used at the end of the year, similar to what we've done in the past two or three years. Over those past two or three years, we've saved taxpayers $49.5 million in total interest savings, or future interest savings, on our bond debt. The Capital Projects Fund shows 402 million currently held in reserves, which will be used for our upcoming bond projects. And then our Child Nutrition Fund has a proposed deficit of 891,000. 800,000 is due to compression and equity adjustments. The other 600,000 is due to the 4% general pay increase that we gave to our employees. We've talked a little about the challenges that we face throughout our budget presentations to the board, including inadequate funding for special education, our increased recapture costs. We're looking at $6 million and just over $6 million in recapture for fiscal year 2025. We've had ESAR funds for the last three years or so, and that totaled over $200 million that we no longer have now. And the basic allotment, of course, has not been adjusted since 2019, and inflation just continues to increase. And so, just to take a look at how the proposed budget impacts our fund balance, despite all those challenges that we mentioned earlier, Arlington has continued to maintain a sufficient fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is well above the current policy and consistently within the best practice range of 20% to 25%. And so, another look at our general fund, proposed budget, proposed revenue again of 601 million, and proposed expenditures of 668 million leave a budget gap of 67 million. The general pay increase of 16.8 brings the total budget gap to 84. One-time financial management strategies will fill this gap with federal funding of approximately $10 million. We've talked about that before in our ESAR funds. Those funds will expire in September, and our local capital outlay that was set aside in reserves will also help with that. That results in the $25 million deficit from the General Operating Reserve. This is a copy of what the board has in front of them for later tonight. They're required to adopt the budget at the functional level, and this one pager shows the budget at that functional level for all the funds that need to be approved. And so, addressing the budget gap is going to require, of course, both short-term and long-term actions beginning in fiscal year 2025. And I'll ask you, Dr. Smith, if you want to step in there and speak to that?
Yeah, there are a couple of things, trustees, that I wanted to make sure I highlighted tonight, and I think Darla has touched on a couple of things regarding the budget challenges that we have in front of us. I want to highlight one of those things because I don't know how much our public knows about this, nor how much we talk about it. But prior to the last legislative session, the governor actually asked for a study about how we funded special education in the state of Texas, and the findings were that we underfunded special education statewide to the tune of approximately $2.5 billion. That's not million, that's billion dollars. And so, the squeeze is real for districts around the state right now. You have things like underfunded special education services as a state, rising inflation, the costs that we're all feeling from the rising inflation, and the end of ESAR fund. We are in tight pitch coming up here, and the legislature has failed to take action over the last session. So, this year is going to be a challenging year for us when we talk budget coming up. Couple of short-term things that we have to do is we're going to be looking to really lean on our friends in the FFC, the Financial Futures Committee, to talk about budget reduction strategies coming up and use our community as partners in this process because it's going to be such a critical piece for us. We need to employ a staffing study to see against peer districts in the state, are we right-sized staffed or are we not right-sized staffed, and use that information. In the long term, and those are just examples, in the long term, we really need to make sure that we're looking at facility use, and we really need to make sure that we're ensuring that we have a robust program evaluation and return on investment program so that we know are the things that we're doing as a school district actually producing the outcomes that we want as a school district? And if so, investing in those, and if not, figuring out other ways to either improve that performance or focus on something else. These are extremely tough conversations, and I've mentioned this to all of you one-on-one. I mentioned it in our last meeting as a board, and I wanted to make sure that you know we are committed to working with this, but we're going to need our partners as trustees in this team of eight that are here and the partners in the audience up here because with the legislature failing to act, with things like underfunded special education services in our state, we are in a tight situation in Arlington ISD despite the outstanding management that our Board of Trustees and former superintendent have done for years regarding our fiscal condition. So, just wanted to make sure you know, it's a big year for us. We're committed to doing the right work, but it is going to be a challenge, and I need your support and need your partnership along the way.
And just maintaining our fiscal health over the next few years, as Dr. Smith alluded to, we continue to ensure unmodified audit opinions that indicate our finances are transparent and are fairly presented. We get those over the last several years. We maintain that best practice of 20% to 25% in unassigned fund balance. We need to sustain the AA1 debt rating from Moody's and the AA rating that we get from Standard and Poor's. I'm actually talking to Moody's right now, and we should have another rating, a rating upgrade, not an upgrade, but another rating that comes out within the next week or so. My, I believe that we will sustain the rating that we currently have, and that tells a lot about our position on not only general operating, but also in our bond funds and the rates that we will be getting for, you know, for the citizens. We need to ensure that we continue to get that superior achievement rating on our first report. Our financial services team does a great job in all that they do, and the budget department purchasing and pulling this budget together as well, they do a great job. And then, of course, you can see that by the next statement, maintain the best practices continued through receiving the distinguished awards that they do from GFOA, ASBO, and TASBO as well. And that is what I presented, was presenting to you tonight for the fiscal year 2025 budget on general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and food service fund. And just as a reminder, the fund balance reserves will cover any anticipated shortfalls that we have. And again, the district is still in a very good position as far as our fund balance and our reserves. So, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. This is a public hearing, so we will now take public comment. Ms. Forsberg, I understand that we have a registered speaker for the public hearing. At this time, I will call Mr. Richard Weber to address the board. Mr. Weber, I know this is, you're a veteran at this. You will have three minutes to speak. You can start your time when the green light starts, and please try to wrap it up by the time the red light indicates.
Thank you. I want to start with the Braille stipend. Not that it's the most important, but I'll get to the end and I won't have time for it. So, I agree with Mrs. Richardson that we should do what's right. This is smaller than a drop in the bucket. $18,000 and a 600-something thousand, $600 million budget. The thing that also bothers me on this is the reason it was justified not to give it is because it was competitive, because it was tied for last. Yet, when we talk about salaries, not only do we have to be first, we have to be more than first. It doesn't make sense. The logic doesn't make sense as to what was given, meeting 12 days ago, as to why they're not going to give it. Now, 12 days ago, you also talked about culture, and Mrs. Richardson had a high expectation for Dr. Smith, and I'm sorry to say, my opinion's probably not as strong as Mrs. Richardson's, but at least it's getting looked at because I've been complaining about the culture for years. It's a problem when you're paying more than one, when you're paying at the highest level and you saying you need that just to be competitive. That is a problem. That's where our culture comes in. HEB doesn't pay anyplace near where number one is, but it has a lot better ratio keeping teachers. You need to figure out what they're doing right and copy it. I mean, there's a culture problem, and I'm glad you're going to finally look at it because in the past, they haven't looked at it. And I just, it eats me up that you have to be greater than number one in order to be competitive. That's just wrong as far as how you're treating the taxpayer. And then I also want to talk about your paid lobbyist. I mean, inflation's gone up over the past five years, probably over 20%, and there hasn't been any increase in the allotment. Your lobbyist isn't doing a good job. Quite frankly, he needs to be slashed from the budget. I mean, at least save the money that way. So, thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Weber, before you take off, I understand that you've also registered to speak on the non-agenda forum?
Yes.
And I'd like to give you the opportunity to do that now, be respectful of your time if you'd like to proceed with your non-agenda statement.
Um, I just, wait if you don't mind.
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing on the 2024-2025 budget, and we'll move on to our next public hearing, which is on the 2024-2025 federal grant allotments. Dr. Smith, Dr. Wertz?
I don't think I need to introduce Dr. Wertz. I think you all know him. Dr. Wertz is here talking tonight about federal grant applications and allotments that we are working on in Arlington ISD.
All right. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. This evening I'm here because Board Policy CB Local requires that the district provide public notice of federal grant applications through an information item at a board meeting and by publishing the information on the district's website. We actually apply for three general categories of federal grant entitlements. The first one is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is known as ESSA. That includes, those are the Title I funds, Title II funds, III and IV, and we utilize those funds for Title I Part A primarily for campus allotment, for instructional supports, interventions, family engagement opportunities, as well as social and emotional learning. We also use Title II Part A for professional learning. That's the primary funding source for things around professional learning. And then we also utilize Title III Part A funds for both immigrants and for students who are learning English to fund salaries, professional learning, and resources in those classrooms. And then Title IV is utilized for supplemental learning and to promote PBIS and restorative practices and things that are connected to safe and healthy students. The second category is the Special Education Consolidated Grant. This is IDAB, and we receive three categories. One, that's our formula-based. We also receive one around preschool and one for discretionary deaf education, and those funds are primarily used to fund salaries and resources to support those programs for students in the classroom. And the last one is the Perkins Five Grant, which is really focused on CTE. And each of these grants, we apply annually, and we, having indicated on the slide, what our planning amounts are for this upcoming school year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the 2024-2025 federal grant allotments. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. We'll now move on to our regular programming for the evening, our open forum for agenda items. We welcome public comment, and you can sign up to speak at any board member by requesting online at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest by 3:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any registered speakers for open forum tonight?
That's our review.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. We'll now proceed to our first report for the evening. This is Report A. We have our annual presentation from the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Believe the chair is here tonight. Mr. DeKine, thank you for being here, and I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees. My name is Will DeKine. I am the interim chair for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Tonight, with members of the committee present, we will be presenting our annual report to you as Board of Trustees. Congratulations to trustee Larry Mike for winning your election to office. Congratulations to Vice President Sarah McMorrow and Mrs. Fowler for also winning yours as well. I accepted the appointment as the interim chair in January of this past year. The previous chairman, Charles Vinnickin, was unable to complete his term due to some health issues, but I am no stranger to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Having served on the previous 2014 bond chair as the bond chairman for five years, I'm pretty familiar. Several of you trustees have also served with me previously on the Financial Futures and Citizens Bond Oversight Committees as well. My wife, who is a Tarrant County College trustee, Jeanne DeKine, was a co-chairman along with Gara Hill for the capital needs assessment that was focused on this bond specifically that established those priorities of effort for the 2019 bond that our taxpayers voted to approve. I'm also the father of three students that attend schools in the district. One is at the high school level and two are at the elementary school level, and consequently, I'm very familiar with the needs of our district that this bond was intended to support. Tonight, our agenda is straightforward. This presentation is 25 slides long, so you can track progress as we move through it. I'll review the purpose of our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'll review the composition of our members and participants. I'll review the meetings we had this year, and then when we dive into the 11 elements of our charge as a committee, each of those 11 elements will provide observations, recommendations for continued success. We'll then review the bond program, expected outcomes, and discuss the overall success of the bond program to date. Finally, we'll conclude with the thanks and appreciation for those assisting our committee, and then I'll continue to respond to any questions any of you might have. But I'd rather, if I could, have this a discussion back and forth as we move through the slides. If you have a question, let's address it, let's talk about it. I think we'll get a little bit more out of it as we're going along. And then at the end, of course, if you have, you know, some alibis, some additional questions you've got, we'll take care of it. So, hopefully, this is a little bit more interactive, and that'll make it a little more interesting for everybody involved, I hope, as well. The purpose of our committee. So, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee was established to provide transparency and enhance public confidence that the bond program is being utilized as intended by the taxpayers to improve our school district. Our purpose is to provide findings and recommendations to you as the Board of Trustees related to that usage, to track the progress of the bond program, and provide potential recommendations that could help maximize the potential of the bond program. This is the third CBOC report to the Board of Trustees concerning the 2019 bond program. COVID adversely impacted the first two years, 2020 and 2021, of the bond program, but the previous 2022 and 2023 bond program reports are archived on the AISD website for public review. I'll now discuss with you the composition of our board. The CBOC consists of 11 members that serve two-year staggered terms. We have one alternate member and a student leader advisory board consisting of 10 students from high schools. I don't think that this is large enough, and I believe that a 15-member board with perhaps two slab students per high school would better represent our community. With us today, fellow board members we have present, Catherine Parra, would you please stand? Wave to the crowd. Darla Pinzel and Kim Proctor.
Lloyd.
Lloyds, I apologize. Kim Lloyd. So, our meeting schedule, again, like I said, I was appointed as interim chair in January. I happen to be present for the August meeting at Thornton Elementary School, but the way an annual cycle works for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is that in August, the new members and the slab come together, they're oriented, as we'll get into some of the details here with the charge on what was supposed to happen with the 2019 bond, what is actually happening, you know, kind of get everyone aligned. The first quarterly meeting was at the new school, Thornton Elementary School, which was a fantastic community event, held shortly thereafter where the school was opened to the new school year. We held an October 24th meeting at Berry Elementary School. There was a meeting in January at Arlington High School where we got to tour the campus. There was a follow-up meeting at Arlington High School about a month later. The actual day we had our CBOC meeting, it was raining, and it was deemed unsafe to go into the construction portion of what they're calling the cube, but we got a chance to come back a couple of weeks later and walk through it with Mr. Horn and his staff and got to review that as well. We also had a quarterly meeting at Bailey Junior High, which is still under construction, and then we're here today with the annual board report. So, I'm going to cut into the charge, and at this point, are there any questions so far before I proceed? Any of the trustees? Okay. So, our first charge is to review the 2019 reports submitted to the board, Capital Needs During Committee, basically understand what is it that this bond was supposed to achieve? What are we setting out to do? Our observation was that the AISD staff did a very good job of conveying the bond scope with full transparency. We observed that the faculty and staff were working very diligently to ensure that the classroom experiences were not significantly diminished or tried to minimize as much as possible the effect of the bond program on those levels of instruction. And the staff identified projects that they showed us, that we saw and observed, we believe are consistent with the district's long-range master plan. So, we're doing what we're set out to do. Our recommendation at this point, just kind of reviewing this top level, what are we trying to do, is without a doubt, COVID had an impact at the very beginning of this, and with COVID came inflation. And so, fortunately, I think we're through a lot of that now. We're seeing that in the numbers in terms of countering inflation, but we know that Mr. Horn and his staff and the district at large have been working very hard trying to counter that at every turn and minimize those impacts. And so, we see that, and we'd recommend continuing to do so because that is definitely helping the overall progress of the bond program. Our second charge was to review the process that was used to solicit, qualify, and select not only the design professionals, the architects, but the contractors and the vendors. And so, it goes, well, it doesn't go without saying, I need to say it. The level of detail and rigor that Mr. Horn and his staff put into each and every one of these bond packets is truly amazing. I mean, if there was a 10-inch-high folder of documentation and data that not only keeps everything legal, but also really captures, hey, what are we supposed to do? And the systems used to measure those bids and contracts are very well-established. For the first time, in my experience, we got to look at the weighted decision matrix that they use to help very fairly judge and look across the different bidders and vendors for these- for these projects. We're very pleased with the level of detail involved there. We're pleased with the level of back and forth between the architects and the, you know, the performance, the general contractors. And we do believe that, to the best of our ability as a district, we are trying to get the best value for the district through these programs. One thing that we did discuss and kind of observe is, in that weighted decision matrix, there are a few things that either by design or just happenstance need to be mentioned but aren't necessarily a screening criteria that jumps right out that could somehow be incorporated. For example, the performance of a hub vendor or a contractor in meeting their hub utilization, that's a straightforward criteria. But what's not in there is, if this is a vendor we've viewed before, how did they do last time? When they promised 20% or 30%, did they come back and did they meet it or not? It's not really in there, but it is kind of, it's available to be thought of and discussed under sort of a subjective assessment that is at their ability. So as a committee, what we're recommending, however it can be legally done, is to sort of infuse the wording that guides the subjective criteria that they're using to look and evaluate these. Hey, keep this in mind. Keep some of these things in mind. And there were a couple other, but Hub was one that stood out. Keep that in mind as you're looking, not only what do people say, you know, they're going to do, but how did they actually perform? And keep that, you know, as part of the consideration as well. So that's what we saw in charge number two. Charge number three for us was to review, basically, what's the status of everything going on? How's it going? And so, we observed that the efforts for the facilities, the new facilities, were fantastic. All the new builds, the construction, the quality has just been really, really good by and large. The fine arts deployment of instruments for kids and uniforms, that's all going well and having, you know, a great impact on the students. Transportation and safety ongoing, the security and technologies ongoing as well, that's there. We've done, I think, a fairly good job of, now that the inflation has leveled off, trying to normalize that a bit and try to get the best value for our money. Cost optimizations are still required, though, and I think the team is doing a reasonable job, a good job of doing that, looking for benefit and value. And so, we would recommend to continue to review and prioritize the bond scope on projects and request realignment from the Board of Trustees in order to help manage that inflation. So at this point, I'll mention that it's possible that there might be a missing level of project management in this, and I'll just briefly touch on it. In this bond, unlike other bonds that I've observed in the past, this is a billion-dollar bond virtually, not a 300, 500 million, this is a billion-dollar bond. And we're doing not only a lot of new builds, but we're doing a lot of construction inside of existing facilities, which, you know, Arlington High School, the one that I happen to visit is a great example, where there's a lot of turmoil moving students out of one classroom to another so you can make room so that the modifications, the upgrades can be done. There's a level of project management that is like a move management. Those are the folks that go in and say, hey, what's the impact when this classroom shuts down? Where are the printers that the teachers need? Or why does this, you know, VoIP or internet plug-in work under a chalkboard but not over by the teacher's desk? Or how come I've only got two drops of power here and there? And I'm just citing examples of that level of project management that really looks at, how do I move from point A to point B? It doesn't do the teachers and staff very much good when somebody with a dolly and a box says, hey, I'm here to move your stuff without all the pre-planning. So obviously, it's happening, and how is it happening? It's happening because the assistant principals, the principals, the teachers, the staff, and even the parents are stepping up at the local campuses and filling that gap and trying to work through the best they can. Again, Arlington High is the one that I was able to view, but there are some classrooms that folks have had to move their own band instruments, or they've moved several times. Not to say that it wasn't planned, but there's that perhaps missing level of project management that could be incorporated in future bonds. Or when appropriate, there may be an opportunity going forward in this bond still to do that, to ease the burden on those principals, those administrators, those parents, those teachers, because they really are going above and beyond right now as a team to make it happen. You know, to try to do that as efficiently as possible and make that happen as well as possible. Our next charge was to look at all of the reporting, the budgets, the encumbrances, the expenditures. You know, again, inflation, you know, played a part in what we observed. We're doing a good job trying to leverage the bond issuances as well, the timing on those bonds. Ms. Moss's efforts to maintain our ratings with, you know, the bond companies, Moody's, the external auditors is fantastic. It keeps our rates lower, it's beneficial to us. We would also say, our recommendation, continue to sustain those efforts, continue to sustain the efforts to track and monitor our costs. At any given time, I know that Mr. Horn and Ms. Moss have an excellent feel for what has been spent and what we're about to spend, what's coming up. There's no doubt in my mind that that is not being closely monitored and scrutinized. I think we're doing a good job of that. And I think we will continue to look for opportunities to potentially hedge our bets a bit by purchasing long-lead items. And we saw some evidence of that in previous years, still in this bond, where the playground equipment was sourced early and set aside for implementation. And I think that's a real strong success story of, you know, we got it at a good price when we could, they warehoused it for us, and when it came time to put it into the ground, we weren't going out having to now buy something that, you know, had subject itself to inflation. And so, there are continued opportunities that we see coming over the horizon, perhaps with some of the upcoming, you know, larger, you know, sports stadium builds and stuff. There may be some opportunities to warehouse or get some of the stuff at cost, you know, economies of scale and leverage that. And I know Mr. Horn is keen to do that and continues to look for those opportunities. We say, please, continue to do so. Our fifth charge was to look at historically underutilized businesses and how is that being impacted across the board? Are we doing a good job or not? And the hub participation as of June right now is at about 25%. And so, what that means is that 25% of the vendors that are providing our construction and services, et cetera, are from historically underutilized businesses. Be it, in previous bonds, I had seen, you know, 17% was a good number, 22% was a fantastic target. So I think that what we're seeing in this bond is even better performance, and there's always opportunity for improvement. We're seeing better performance as well. And how is AISD doing that? Well, we know that they're looking at vendor performance in the past. They're looking at opportunities to go out and solicit business from local-sourced historically underutilized businesses through symposiums that they host twice annually. And those are all good things because every year, we're turning new scopes, new bonds. I think maybe even tonight, we'll get to see some new conceptual visualizations of some new work that then we turn around and go out to the community and try to find, you know, those vendors to support. So we would say, you know, continue to provide that participation in those programs, making it publicly available. One thing that we've noticed is that there's something called an area impact study of historically underutilized businesses. And that's where you hire a company to go out and look across, let's just say, the Dallas-Fort Worth area, to say, hey, you know, how many historically underutilized businesses are out there? Are they available? You know, there's always turnover, especially every couple of years, you've got new vendors out there. You know, what's the availability? So like, if it wasn't possible that there were 90, you know, if it's not possible to get 90%, you know, hub participation, these area impact studies will tell us, well, what's a realistic number to target? That is something that, going forward in any future bonds, we would want to have in our hip pocket to better understand what's the contractor environment we're at. So we'd recommend sustaining those efforts and to continue to sustain hub participation through those contractor symposiums. We're doing a lot of good things right. Our sixth charge is to review the internal and external audits of the bond program and assess the administration's response to the audit and remediation of those efforts. So we know that external audits are provided to the CBOC. When they do one, we get to take a look at it, we have the opportunity to. There are internal controls that support those processes. They do audits of all the CMAR projects, and randomly, they do it on the CSP projects. But the fact of the matter is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in every case that we've done any kind of an audit, we've found something that goes to our benefit. So kind of the obvious question is, well, why aren't we auditing everything? Well, you can't, we just don't have the manpower right now to do it, and it does cost money to audit. However, we're making it back, and then some. So it's something to consider, to continue those audits and perhaps even expand the scope or adjust those triggers for when you want to have another CSP audit, because we're finding things. Charge seven is to review and provide input on AISD communications to the public regarding the 2019 bond. So we recognize that there are a lot of communication efforts, advertising this and other things that come out. I think I got a message on YouTube today, and it's Facebook, websites, the district emails are helpful. So with the help of our slab students, we sat around and tried to say, hey, what else can we do to sort of expand the reach of our communication? What other options are there? And so, we started going down the path of talking about, for your consideration, leveraging a little bit more of the individual contributor kind of perspectives, content creators such as teachers, students, or parents, that can kind of tell the stories before and after the bond's progress. And the slab sort of comes into play that as well. You know, having them utilize whatever the latest and greatest social media platform is they're on these days, which it seems to change about every other year, there's a new platform that everyone's on. You know, everyone's watching to get this information out. So, you know, I don't know that our CBOC members are necessarily on the tip of the spear for, you know, social media platforms, but our slab members are. And I think that there's an opportunity there where we can leverage their knowledge, their use, to help get the word out what's going on. Staying focused on using multiple languages, I was delighted that if I happen to be a Vietnamese speaker or I happen to speak Spanish, the website's interchangeable, so language accessibility is out there. I think that that's great, that's fantastic. We think there's an opportunity for more meet and greets, though. I see all of you out at ribbon cuttings, you know, every other week, it seems like, doing things. I think there's opportunities to open that up to the citizens to come take an opportunity to, you know, look at this campus. They could even be done at local levels, principals saying, hey, you know, come, to say on Bailey Junior High, hey, come to Bailey Junior High, let's go walk through the new area on this date, you know, make sure you got a hard hat and everything's safe, but, you know, controlled opportunity. And hey, while we're at it, why don't we just video it and maybe have the students, you know, post it or share it, et cetera? We do a good job, though, I think, of photographing and documenting all of those, but I think there's an opportunity that we, as a CBOC, identified as this might be something for your consideration to look at, expanding. Any questions at this point? Y'all are quiet. Okay. So with the coordination of the superintendent, or as designee, we assess the degree of satisfaction of key stakeholders with the quality of work and impact of bond programs, the projects. So we conducted an onsite visit of Berry, Thornton, Arlington, and Bailey. I witnessed Thornton and was just amazed with the quality of construction, not to mention the, I'll say it as architecture, but the thought process and how we deliver instruction to students these days and, you know, the way we arrange classrooms and common areas, et cetera, like, it's really neat to see. Not all schools are like that, but when it's a good opportunity to set something up, it's fantastic. And it was really obvious, the immediate impact Thornton had on the local community. You can actually look across the street and start seeing new businesses, you know, starting to open up, open up and get started. And I hope that is sustained, and I hope that becomes a hallmark of some of these, you know, revitalization efforts of our facilities across the district. But that was theirs for us to observe as well. We get a lot of good feedback in terms of, you know, how things are going from the faculty. We do get some concerns from time to time, though, that, hey, this isn't quite right, or I'm having to work with, you know, my local contractor. Yes, I'm getting all of my lights replaced, but the ceiling tiles aren't included, so I'm needing to, you know, go to blows to make sure new, not grungy, ceiling tiles are incorporated in this. Excuse me. So I think that's important. Only in a few instances have we observed something that just you shake your head at and you say, that's not quite right. And when we've seen something, we've communicated that to Mr. Horn and his staff, and he has delivered to our satisfaction a remediation plan, you know, when it'll happen, how it'll happen, to make sure that whatever we see will get taken care of. Our recommendation is to continue to include virtual tours of ongoing and completed bond projects, so the public can see what's going on, and encouraging likes and repostings of the good news as we see it. But also to respond when there is a concern or an issue, like, let's address those head-on quickly and succinctly as well. Okay, charge nine. We conduct onsite, did I? Oh, it's slightly different, got it. It's slightly different in terms of charge, our visits. We went out, and we know that there's a whole array of tours that we have done in the past, be it, we're going to a site that's under construction, we go to one that it's completed. We want to continue to visit those campus locations, and I think that there's an opportunity, the CBOC as it stands now, as you saw, really only officially meets four times quarterly. I think there's an opportunity, not only for this bond but future bonds, that that CBOC could be engaged, or portions of it, to go do smaller site visits that are not as intense. You know, we don't need the whole, you know, slideshow presentation, dog and pony, you know, that lasts till eight, nine o'clock at night every time. It may be, hey, if you're available, 3:30, 4:00, we're going to go to this campus when we're not disrupting the students. We're going to walk around the campus, take a look at it. There should be more opportunities for the CBOC to get out in the district and see not just the shiny new stuff that we're really proud of, but show me the stuff that is teed up for work. Show me the things that we're not happy with that are covered in this scope so we can look at it and identify stuff, and maybe even by observation, before the contracts are lettered, the scopes are complete, hey, we missed something, let's add it in while we're at it. While the mobilization for the contractors are there at the location, let's get it taken care of while we're at it. And so, there's an opportunity, I think, for the CBOC, especially if you do increase by chance the number of members, to in smaller part, get out there. And they could report back to the larger group and say, hey, here's what we saw. But, you know, get the CBOC out into the community more, into the schools, into the facilities. And that includes things like your transportation, that includes things like your food services, areas that, you know, aren't necessarily, you know, where the students and the teachers are, but the logistics behind how we make this big organization work, that's just as Finally, by majority vote, all findings and recommendations are going to be presented to the board. So everything that is on the slide that you're seeing, every member of the CBOC had an opportunity to review and agree with and add to and participate in. So these are the findings as a whole. As we provide this to you, you know, we continue to encourage attendance by our slab participants, the students. We'd like to make some additional recommendations here. So I mentioned it earlier that two students per high school may be appropriate. So is its gear now the slab mostly, and I'm not 100% sure, but mostly consists of those new junior-class presidents? So they would have been selected as sophomores, junior-class presidents, that are going to spend a year, possibly two, through their senior year to go through it. Those are your, in many cases, high-achieving students, who have a lot of things on their dance card to go on. And sometimes, they've got conflicts, they've got other things going on. I think in the effort of trying to not only get representation for each of those schools, and by the way, when you get a high school student, you're typically getting the student's cousins, brothers, sisters, in the whole feeder system as well, you're getting that information as well, you know, through them. So look at perhaps, starting with your sophomore class presidents and your junior class presidents, get a little two-year overlap, give them a two-year term. Now, we've probably only got about two, maybe three, years of life left in this bond program, but if you were to implement it now, I think you would see whether or not that recommendation is worthwhile or not. You know, you'd be able to bring somebody who's currently now a sophomore through their senior year and let them provide you input as the bond program's coming to a close. And certainly, for future bonds, it's always been a challenge to crack the code on getting students to come and participate. I've observed whatever was done between the last bond I was participating in, in this bond, that there's a lot more slab participation, so a lot of good things have been done. I noticed that your slab members participated in some budgeting stuff as well. I think that that's key to not only providing that transparency, but then turning around and making that ask to them, hey, go tell your friends, go tell your buddies, this is, you know, what's going on. And to that point, I think we might consider reimagining the orientation of our slab students a bit. There are opportunities for us to, you know, not only have the CBOC sit down with them, but say, hey, here's them, but say, hey, here's kind of the expectations. Also, what do y'all think you can bring to the table? What's important? I mean, we should all be kind of set right on the, the same sheet of music to begin with, here's what the bond was supposed to do, here's where we're at. But going forward, I think there's opportunities for some significant reimagining of how we want to bring those SLAB students to bear. And so that would be a recommendation we would have as well. Okay. Moving on to charge eleven. We're at slide sixteen. Hang in there, folks. Reports to the board annually, or more frequently if necessary. So we're here doing our annual report. This seems appropriate. If we're only having four meetings a year, there's not a whole lot of data to come back. And this is, you know, we're out of school, it's an opportunity. I think what could be missing, though, is that an opportunity, especially if we do increase the pace of smaller CBOC teams going out and taking a look, a desk side with you, a desk side briefing with the Board of Trustees, you know, in a less formal fashion where we can sit down and say, hey, here's what we've seen so far, so that you're not waiting, you know, twelve months before you get input, like, oh, well, maybe we need to do this or that. Hey, I'm seeing some of these things, you know, right now, I'd recommend, you know, consider this as well. So that's what we would, would consider. Again, another-
Mr. DeKane-
Yeah.
Can I just jump, take you up on your offer-
Sure.
-to be a little interactive here at the end? When you say a desk-side meeting with the Board of Trustees, are you asking or envisioning a meeting that's desk-side and maybe it's part of a board workshop with all seven of us here, or something more of a formal sit-down with the three trustees who are members of the Community Engagement Committee who sit on CBOC?
I'm, what I would recommend is more, this is very formal. All of you are here, the superintendents here. I'm envisioning, like, you're in a cafeteria, you're all there at a cafeteria at a high school, you're sitting around the table, you're talking about what you're seeing. Real informal, real hey-hat, you know, what's, what are we seeing? Your point about the members of the Board of Trustees that are participating in the committee, I've, I've got to applaud you all. Oh, thank you. Is it that bad? This year, I've been delighted to see participation by Trustee Haynes, Trustee Chapa, Trustee Richardson, like, you've been present. And it's been a real pleasant experience, not only are you there, but you're asking questions. In the past, I didn't hear a whole lot of questions from trustees if they happened to show. You've all been pretty habitually, you know, attending, and you're there and you're listening. And I can only assume that you go back and share information, but I think the CBOC informally could have an opportunity to sit down with y'all when it's not in a public forum where we can, you know, we're not, we're not drilling through a slide presentation, but we can talk about stuff, we can talk in detail. We can turn to Mr. Horn and say, you know, hey, we need a little more detail on this or that. And he's, he's always had that readily available to provide, but I think it would, it would help, especially where we're at now in the phase of this, this bond. Like, we've had a lot of substantial construction completed, we've got a lot more coming, there are a lot of, you know, moving pieces, and it's good to kind of get all hands on deck and pay attention. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, and that's, that's helpful feedback, and I think we can talk to staff about, you mentioned maybe doing it in a setting that's maybe not so, so formal and public, but unfortunately with the Open Meetings Act, pretty much anytime we meet, it's, doesn't necessarily have to be formal, but it does have to be public and figuring out a good opportunity to do that.
Throw a camera in the corner, you know. Trustee talks function in, in kind of a, a nice way, too. So y'all can figure that out, I'm sure.
We will work on that.
Our twelfth charge is to maintain a presence on the ASD website. We're, we're very appreciative to your staff that make sure that not only all of our materials are there, when appropriate, the packets are there, the packets are released. I think anyone can go historically and look at any of the past 2019, you know, bond meetings, agendas, the packets of information, it's there. We would say continue to, to leverage that, continue to leverage that social media and , and marketing that we try to do. Pay attention to those new, new methods of getting social media out there that seem to be ever-changing and have appreciated the, the push to the viewer efforts that have been occurring. You know, it used to be you'd have to go fishing for yourself to find this information. Sometimes there are links that are pushed, perhaps you even have an opportunity to encourage your principals at schools. Many of them are already doing this in their weekly newsletters that they put out, hey, by the way, here's what's going on with our bond, you know, pushing that information out. I think that, that helps the public understand where we're at and what's coming, and I think we can continue to do a good job.
Mr. DeKane, I do have a question-
Sure.
-coming in, or comment coming in from Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit, Mr. DeKane, on your comments about the, the three people, the three trustees that are there on the committee. We split up and we can't have more than three at a meeting at the same time. All of us serve on district committees, at least two, some of us serve on three district committees. So I wanted to kind of clarify that. It's not that the rest of us didn't want to come to the bond oversight committee, it's that we're assigned to different committees and there can only be three of us there at a time.
Excellent point for, for clarification for everyone, yeah.
Thank you.
The intent of my comments was to drive home, I'm seeing trustee presence in and among the CBOC, you're a little slice of the pie, and it's, it's great to have you all there. It's appreciated. So let's talk about kind of the expected outcomes. This is more for public consumption than anything else. The objective of our overall bond program was to expand our programming, to bring, you know, new things to the district, educational adequacy, efficiently utilize our facilities, do some facility condition improvements on some of our aging structures, make sure safety and security improvements are occurring as well. I would say with expanded programming, it's, it's almost amazing the things that have happened in the past couple of years here in our district. The fully funded pre-K is just remarkable, absolutely remarkable. STEM seems to be in every school and every, you know, potential fashion available to students. The fine arts and dual-language academies are fantastic, and it, it'll be really great to see this next year, the first cohort of, of fine arts, dual-language kids will be going into Arlington High School. Sadly, the cube isn't quite ready for them yet, but it's getting closer and closer. And so I think that that's, it's great, the, the new facilities are fantastic. It's taking a little longer in some cases. You know, for, for every campus, there's, there's a reason or an extension to, hey, why something isn't, you know, occurring on time, but they're by and large very logical and makes sense, in many cases unforeseen. I think that we've, we've really expanded our, our programming and that's, that's very, very positive. Educational adequacy, so the school, elementary schools, all the elementary schools having new playgrounds, benches, just, that's just fantastic. It's a great sense of equity. They're handicap accessible, they were not always, and that's a significant improvement. That's just fantastic, truly fantastic. The fine arts facilities, you know, we're also trying to deploy as best we can to all the pre-existing junior high and elementary schools, appropriate or equivalent sound systems, lighting systems. That is tough to do in some cases, and there's a little bit of inequity across the board from different schools, because some physical structures can't support the level of lights and sound capabilities or that, you know, they're hardwired. Some of these schools have been around a while and, and it's just not as easy to integrate, but as much as possible efforts are being made to make sure that they're, they're being retooled, lights and sound at the elementary level. You know, one thing we've, we observed recently, this past year, looking at the varsity stadiums, we've started on Glassby Field. We know that inflation had some significant impacts on that as well, and you've made decisions through your change order process, et cetera, to kind of account for that. We're still very hopeful that both the Cravens Field and Wyman Fields also get the exact same upgrades, the exact same facelifts. That was the promise to the taxpayers, the equity. So, you know, I'm, I'm here to say that's something we need to achieve, we need to, to deliver that, that equity across the board as well. And I think it's, it's, it's still within striking distance despite all the, the challenge, we're still, we can still do that. Efficient utilization of facilities, we've done a lot of, you know, creating new consolidations here and there in this past bond, and I think it's positively affecting our community. They're appropriate. I'm excited tonight to see potential renderings of the Transportation Center upgrades. I note that those, those bus drivers have been here in person advocating for, you know, improving their conditions, and I'm really excited to see that happen here shortly. Also, the, the number of temporary buildings, this was a, a hot item at least a couple of years ago, and I, I still think it's a hot item, you know, we're getting rid of them. They're, they're moving out. There's one exception at Arlington High School, we've had to bring three in to facilitate the, the band and orchestra movements as, as they're finishing up the auditorium, kind of a, you know, hide the shelves, move the shelves occurring. But those facilities are being set up and the, the administrators, teachers, and staff are doing the best they can to adjust to those new challenges as well. Facility condition improvements, so by and large, this is something to, to understand that when we go in and we build new facilities, there's a certain, you know, level of life you're expecting to get out of these buildings. A lot of our existing buildings will need maintenance over time. The HVAC systems will need to be, you know, improved, the lighting. This bond went a long way to doing a lot for our district. In five years from now or less, we're going to need to be looking at doing something else to maintain that level of maintenance at the right places and, and, you know, depending upon the conditions of the school. And I know Mr. Horn's team is always out there looking at that, but, you know, we're in a, we're in a marathon here, not a sprint, and it's, it's very likely we'll need to continue to take a look at this. You know, ceilings go bad over time, air conditioning systems go bad over time, we're going to have to go in and, and replace those and, and provide maintenance above and beyond the standard maintenance, you know, outside M and O, but in actual capital, capital improvements. We'll need to do that. One final point, I, I think that the CBOC wants to be able to provide better support to you all in terms of what we're seeing and what's out there. I think there are opportunities for the CBOC to be brought in when there's something that you are all going to have to vote on, a change, you know, if we need to go fix Sam Houston High School, because the, you know, the drainage above the library's not working. I think it just adds to the transparency when the CBOC is, is standing right next to, you know, Mr. Horn saying, hey, we've reviewed it, the community knows about it, we think this is a good thing. And then it just makes your job easier to, to go ahead and consider the approval or not of those things, you know, making sure that we're leveraging the CBOC as a partner to help provide that transparency, to help provide that input, as opposed to, you know, just waiting every quarter for something. You know, we, we want to be a little more proactive with you, so we'll offer that. Safety and security improvements, another point, real quick, as you, as you can imagine, we're at slide twenty-three, so we're get, we're almost there, hang in there. A lot has been done for safety and security across the district. I know that there have been a lot of unfunded mandates coming down from the state. We have to have police officers, safety officers, you know, across the board. And there's no, no budget on hand to do it. Y'all have managed to make that happen as an operation kind of perspective, as a facility perspective capital, like the vestibules, the, the safety, security, the access points, I think go a long way to making our students and teachers and staff and parents feel a lot safer. Some things you, you can't really anticipate, and I do appreciate your Swiss cheese approach of a layered response, you know, there's no one silver bullet perfect solution, but you've got, you know, layered response, that not only is it layered, but depending upon the situation, it gets ramped up or ran down depending upon activities. And so I think that points to a, a very smart use of your facilities and the personnel managing them, so thank you for that. I would say also, too, that the SLAB students can help us with our safety and security as well. I'm pretty sure that the SLAB students have a pretty good idea where all the kissing hallways are, and, you know, we've done, we've gone a long way to getting eighty-five, ninety percent coverage, but those students know where, where the gaps are. And so while we have this billion-dollar bond still on the table, and we have the opportunity to maybe close some of those gaps, let's engage the SLAB, let's see what we might be missing, and get that put in while we still can, because I think that is a, of paramount importance to all of us, is the safety of our, our, our students, our faculty, staff, and anyone visiting our campuses. So, slide twenty-four, special thanks to the Board of Trustees. President Chapa, thank you very much. You participated on our committee, appreciate your insights, your questions. You know, Mrs. McMurro, thank you for all the help that you've provided over the years and support to this team. Mrs. Richardson, your presence at those meetings as well, very helpful, as well as, you know, Mrs. Haynes, thank you very much. Melody, you've always supported us as past president, and we appreciate that. Larry Mike, welcome to the team. I'm sure you're, you're, you're learning quick and it's, it's been an adventure and it will continue to be so, but glad to see you. And then my old friend, Mr. Wobanks here on the screen, thank you as well. And the staff, of course, Dr. Smith, thank you. Glad to have you onboard as well, part of the team moving forward. Darla Moss, our CFO, has been very helpful and informative. You know, Dr. Hill, Kelly Horn is, is pretty much, you know, our go-to guy for answering questions. He's always been there and responded and very supportive. Carla Martin, Eric Upchurch, Corey Robinson, Eric White, Michael Parkos, Dr. Anderson, he walked around Arlington High School with us and talked all about the, the fine arts programs and what they're expecting and what's coming, so we got a, a good preview into what's about to happen. Mr. Lewis, you know, I, I think he's an unsung hero, and I'll just highlight something that I observed, is that there was an incident where y'all ended up having to, to be with some students kind of late into the night. And Food Services did, did some amazing work to make sure that both the students and the families were taken care of. The logistics behind this stuff is amazing. You know, the transportation as well, out, you know, out to Jason Gillis, our Director of Transportation, all of those efforts to, you know, take care of our students and families, thanks to them. You know, Mr. Stevens, our Director of Security, thank you all very much. That is the slide number twenty-five and formal portion of our report to you. I am available, as are the team, our CBOC, to answer any additional questions you might have or not.
Thank you, Mr. DeKane, and I will, I will just briefly echo the, the value of consulting students on security issues. We had a trustee talk, I think towards the end of April, that was student-focused and primarily attended by students, including several SLAB members, Dr. Smith and some other trustees were there. Remembering at the moment exactly who was there, but it was very valuable. We spent quite a bit of time with the students and they did give us insight on, this is what you might think is happening, and, and in reality, you know, yes, that's kind of happening, but also look at this other thing. My switchboard is lighting up. I will go back to Ms. Fowler. Whoop. Hang on. Now the switchboard is lighting up, and every time it lights up, it switches the order. There we go.
Thank you, President Chapa. Mr. DeKane, thank you so much to you and, and some of your board members that are here tonight. I don't think people realize how many hours and hours and hours you and your board put into things like this, and we depend on you to be our eyes and our boots on the ground for all of these different bond programs that are going on. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for doing this, thank you for alerting us when you see things that maybe need to be changed, but we depend on you and your team to help us with that, and you all just do a phenomenal job. You really do. You are there, you're watching, you're taking notes, reporting back to us. And I just thank you so much for your time, because you all spend a lot of time on these projects. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, team.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Up next, I have Secretary Richardson.
Mr. DeKane, I am so impressed. I feel like you could be a Secret Service agent with your attention to detail and the way that you have, you have scoped out the things that even we don't think about sometimes. And the, just the attention to the detail is, does not go unnoticed with the way that you and your team thought about things, but also the active way you involve the SLAB students. I was really thrilled. It was our last meeting that we were working on the slides and watching y'all process, and we didn't participate as much as we watched, but you actively asked them their opinions, and when they had, some of their ideas went, I, I don't know if I would have said that, but then as they started fleshing it out and the way you worked with them, it was impressive, and it's exactly what I want to see. When we say we're going to collaborate with our students, it's not that, that we have them serve on the committee and sit there, and that way at the end of it, you get to read their names. You actively let them voice their ideas, and since then, the young lady who was there that last night, she reached out to me and said, have y'all considered X, Y, and Z? What about? All because she felt like she then had a voice. She had access. She felt like those layers were stripped away of, oh, I can't text or call a board member. Great. So I get to go to Mr. Horn and say, the student had this idea, all because you guys made her feel like her voice mattered, because it does matter. So thank you for engaging our students. So thank you for engaging our students. I look forward to serving with all of you again and getting to hear the progress that we're gonna continue to make on this bond. And it only makes me more excited, knowing what we have to look forward to our other schools that do need our attention. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Keep doing good Secret Service agent work.
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. Ms. Haynes.
Yes. So trustee Richardson said a smidge of the things I wanted to point out, but that last meeting really sticks out in my head, watching you as the interim chair guide the committee through the recommendation process. It, it was enjoyable to see. It was refreshing to see that you, you took control in all the right ways, and you allowed for everyone to have a voice. And I really enjoyed that. So thank you for that. Thank you to the committee members for stepping up and, and being a part of this and showing up and participating actively. And thank you to you for stepping in. I know that that was a big ask when President Chapa called you to make that ask, but we needed you for the job, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Vice President McMurro.
Thank you, Mr. DeKane. I loved your comment about increasing the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to, from eleven to fifteen members. I think that's a great recommendation. It's something we're actually about to consider here tonight, because those quarterly meetings, the year zips by. And things happen, life happens. There, there's going to be an absence, but that quarterly connection is so important. And more representation and on the student's side as well, I think that's going to be a huge win for our board and for our district. So we appreciate that recommendation into the, in addition to the other recommendations. So thank you, Mr. DeKane, Ms. Parra, Ms. Lloyd, and Ms. Pezznella for being here tonight. We've, we've got a great committee, even the folks that aren't here this evening. I wanna, I wanna also acknowledge Mr. Charles Finnicum. He was an excellent chair, and he can't be here tonight, but the work that you guys have all done collectively has been so very appreciative, appreciated. And I really like the recommendations that we see here. I know that a lot of thought and collaboration was put into your presentation, and I want you to know that that will be reciprocated from our board moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President McMurro. I know that Mr. Wilbanks has some comments or questions.
Thank you, President Chapa. And thank you, Mr. DeKane. Welcome back to your old stomping ground. I apologize for my voice, but I've just got a few additional comments, just pointing out some of the excellent recommendations that your committee had made. First of all, as Chair of Audit, and knowing just how much, and large amounts of money that we have saved or recouped because of those external audits on this construction manager at risk audits, I'm all for finding the right zen balance on the number of audits we do in that. But it does seem like there is a large return on investment on those. So I agree wholeheartedly on your recommendation on item six of twelve. On charge nine of twelve, yes to more visits. I think just waiting to go to one campus once a quarter with all of the packet, all of the projects that we've had in this package doesn't do it, doesn't give you guys the kind of oversight options that are needed on a bond package this large. So I know other districts, they load up a bus on a Saturday or some other convenient time, and they make a tour around several campuses all at once, maybe not with a formal meeting afterwards. But I agree with you with that. And I think that's something that we should look to change in future bond packages in the way that we do the site visits for the committee.
Mr. Wilbanks, Dr. Smith would like to jump in just for a second.
Yeah.
Oh, he means afterwards. Never mind. Continue, Mr. Mr. Wilbanks.
And then you made, I don't remember at what point you made this recommendation, but just to let you know, and, and you may have remembered when we were both on CBOC, there were often times that Ms. Powell and either Kelly Horn or Kelly Horn's predecessor would come to us with additions that were oversights, for instance, and, and left out of an opportunity when there was work, substantial work going on on a campus. The example I always use is when we built the new cafeteria addition at Arlington High, there was a lot of problems there on Park Row with the greenscape and the hardscape and wayfinding. And they came back to us with a, I think about a $200,000 add-on for hardscape and wayfinding for the front of the building there on, on Park Row. We received that information first, and then we voted and made a recommendation to the board to adopt that change order for that project. And I think that's another way, again, for transparency and the way we can get, leverage you guys and get stakeholder input on opportunities just like that. So kudos to you for pointing that out. And I think we should get back to utilizing you guys when we can, just for those kind of things. And then finally, I'll just ask you this. Kind of using a Goldilocks scale, is the information that you guys are receiving from staff as a committee, is it too much? Is it too little? Or is it just right?
Well, truthfully, I am an engineer, so the more information I have to help make decisions, you know, I'll take it and consume it. I think it is something in the orientation of a CBOC member we need to drive home, is that these packets are provided ahead of time. You need to read them ahead of time. You need to become familiar with it so that hopefully, you know, when we have, you know, Mr. Horn and the team in front of us, we're able to ask those additional questions, those insightful questions, because we're all familiar with it. And so to answer your question, Mr. Wilbanks, I would say, continue to provide that level of detail. I would personally like to see more in terms of Gantt chart phasing of projects. I know it's there, and I can go fish it out of the website. But understanding the timing and what projects are active across the district, I think really helps put in perspective for everybody how much is really happening. Again, this is a billion dollar bond. You know, across so many, I don't know what the square footage of the city of Arlington or our district in whole, but it's amazing, all the different moving pieces, the coordinations that occur. It's, it's something that I think we can all gain a better appreciation of all the work that's being done. And it is, it is quite an amazing challenge. And when we're up here providing recommendations, you know, that we're talking about the, the two to three percent of stuff we see, you know, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of this is, is just fantastic. And we're just trying to make it that much better. So I'm happy with the level. Always take more and encourage everyone, do your homework. Of course, it's a school.
Thank you.
Makes total sense.
Thank you for that feedback.
We'll go to Mr. Mike.
Thank you. Mr. DeKane, I will be very brief. I am impressed, thoroughly impressed by the level of work for a group of volunteers. I, I think we need to make mention of that. You don't get paid, and you've come with such a detailed presentation with very detailed recommendations. You know, I'm, I'm new here, but I'm so glad to be a part of a group of, of people and a community that really cares about our children. And I look forward to working with this committee. I don't know why I'm so happy to do so, but I, I'm eager to jump in and work out. So I, I thank you for everything.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great, meaningful work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Dr. Smith?
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for stepping in in a time of, of important leadership need for us. And also, thank you for recognizing the staff. I know the amount of work that they put in. I will admit, you scared me when we went through all the slides, and it says coordinate with the superintendent's office. And I thought, I haven't coordinated anything with Will. So, and then it says, or designate me. So I'm very thankful for our staff.
You've got a good staff.
I know. I, I'm very thankful for our staff and the amount of work that they put in. And I'm, I'm grateful to hear the progress and how proud you are to serve on the committee and what you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Mr. DeKane, we go quite a ways back, I think, all the way to the 2009 CBOC, which in retrospect, I think it was one hundred and ninety-seven million was, was, you know, look where we are now.
Financial futures before that, too.
Yeah. So I, I got a little chuckle every time you said billion dollar bond, because I remember there were some pretty heated discussions a couple of years ago about whether or not we, we wanted to call it a billion dollar bond. And, and so we settled on nine hundred and sixty-six million. And I said, don't you dare call it a billion dollar bond. And so that's exactly what people are gonna say. And here we are, it's a billion dollar bond.
Inflation. That's, you know, I warned you.
This was a very thorough report. It's very helpful. I'm glad to see that the committee is taking seriously and delivering on its, its charge to make findings and recommendations. And you did that in every area under the charge, and then addressed the five different areas of oversight substantively for the bond. I would reiterate, for anyone who's watching, the committee knows this, the amount of information about our bond that's available online, going all the way back to the fourteen bond, is, is incredible. You can pull projects for every campus. You can pull every instrument that we've purchased and see a list of, of those instruments on the fine arts component of the bond. Our website's a wealth of information for any of that. It's fully transparent. And we can't do that with the help of the CBOC, but also the help of Mr. Horn and his staff, who have been at this for quite a while and have the task of implementing a very, very large program in a relatively short amount of time. And then the pandemic threw some challenges on top of that. So very thankful for the work of the committee and our staff to put us in the position of being able to make these facilities an opportunity so nice for our students and our staff. So thank you.
Thank you, President Chapa.
Okay. We will move on. Our next agenda item is administrative appointments. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa. I would like to recommend the board ratify the appointment of two outstanding individuals we discussed in closed session for the principal of Pope Elementary and the executive director of Human Resources.
Do I have a motion to approve the, to approve the administrative ratifications discussed in closed session?
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice President McMurro. That's a motion by Haynes, second by Vice President McMurro. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. We were gonna do this a little bit differently today. The folks present in the room will still vote in person. Mr. Wilbanks, I'll call for your vote. When I call for a vote, just give me your vote. Okay, let's vote. Mr. Wilbanks?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks votes yes. Everyone in the room unanimous. It is a seven oh vote to approve the administrative appointments.
Thank you, trustees. I am excited. We're gonna start with Pope Elementary. As you know, we have an outgoing retirement this year, and we had to find the right candidate for Pope Elementary. And tonight, I am excited to announce Crystal Dunlop is the new principal of Pope Elementary. Crystal, come on up, please. So Crystal comes to us from Grand Prairie ISD, where she's been serving as an assistant principal at Eisenhower Elementary. Through her career, she's worked in Dallas ISD, Allen ISD, and Grand Prairie. She has served as a math science teacher and reading social studies teacher at various grade levels. I had the opportunity to sit down and chat with her not too long ago. I'm so excited about her leadership and joining our team in Arlington ISD. Ms. Dunlop, welcome. We're excited for you. Please take a minute and, and share your thoughts with the Board of Trustees and, and our guests here tonight.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. I'm honored to be chosen to be the next principal of Pope Elementary. You know, I have big shoes to fill. Their leader has been there for twenty-five years. And so I know this is your baby, but I just want you to know that you are leaving it in good hands. I'm excited to bring my skills, my experience, and my passion to see every single student achieve and grow. So I'm excited to continue the work with the staff. I'm excited to meet a lot of my new Pope family members tonight. And I'm just, I'm excited to join Arlington. I've seen and heard great things. And then I have my family Kane, some of my family members, and some, also some of my mentors, some administrators that poured into me and, you know, really helped me to be prepared for this day. So thank y'all, thank everybody. And I'm really excited to be a part of the team.
Mentors, family members, thank you for allowing her to join this team. We're excited about the work at Pope Elementary School now and in the future, and we're excited about her leadership. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Finally, I would like to invite Ms. Dollris Johnson up. Dollris is our executive director of Human Resources, Employee Relations and Development. Dollris and I get to work together on a regular basis. And I asked her, what do you want me to say tonight? And she's like, oh, it's totally up to you. So I'm just gonna go off script. Dollris has been here tonight, or been here in Arlington ISD for a number of years, working in their Human Resources Department since 2016. Prior to that, she was with the city of Dallas as a lead investigator, and also with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services in Jessup, Maryland. Dollris, I have been extremely impressed with Dollris' leadership and professionalism in my short time here. We meet on a weekly basis. Sometimes I prod them all and say it'd be nice not to meet so often, but I am very, very thankful for Dollris' leadership, her, her thoughtful action, and her focus on doing what's right for our students, staff, and community. And so Dollris, congratulations on stepping into this executive director role. We're really excited to have you there.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and thank you again, Dr. Smith. I'm deeply honored to be here. I'm really excited to be confirmed tonight. I'm grateful for your vote of confidence. I look forward to continuing to serve in Arlington. I thank you for that opportunity. And I look forward to continuing our work to support the adults, to educate our students every day. I want to recognize my family. I do have my four-year-old, her birthday is tomorrow, with me here today, and my husband. Thank you. I'm thankful for their support. I'm thankful for their support. Their encouragement has been invaluable to me. Also want to recognize my supervisor, Mr. Scott Kale, and my incredible colleagues in the Human Resources Department. Your collaboration, dedication, and passion for education and employee well-being inspire me daily. And I look forward to continuing the journey with you. Thank you all.
All right. At this time, we will take a five-minute recess. If you have come to celebrate with one of the appointees, you're welcome to take pictures in here. We also have a setup outside. Would ask trustees to be back in here at the dais in about, let's call it at eight-ten. And we will stand in recess. Okay, we are going to re, yeah, we're gonna reconvene from our recess at eight-fifteen. We are moving on to the action item portion of our agenda, beginning with action item A, consider adoption of the 2024-2025 budget. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, President Chapa. Tonight, Mrs. Moss is here to bring for the board, to the board's consideration, the adoption of the 24-25 budget. As I stated earlier, we have already presented on this topic tonight. Ms. Moss and I are here to answer any questions, should the board have any. But there will be no further presentation at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Trustees, any comments or questions on budget? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote after we have a motion. Do I have a motion on action item A? Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. I move to approve the 2024-2025 budget, including general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and food service fund as presented.
Have a motion from Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Fowler. Trustees, we will vote. Mr. Wilbanks, give us your vote.
He said yes.
I believe he voted yes, but we could not quite hear him. Okay, we will say that Mr. Wilbanks indicated in many ways that he voted in the affirmative. The budget passes unanimously, seven zero. Moving on to action item B, consider 2024-2025 appointments to the Financial Futures Committee and changes to the committee charge. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, President Chapa. We have Carla Martin here tonight, if you have any questions. But I do know our, our board has worked on these lists and stuff and, and committees, and I believe they're ready for your approval at this time.
Thank you. Comments or questions from trustees on appointments to the Financial Futures Committee? Comments or questions from trustees on appointments to the Financial Futures Committee? Seeing none, calling for a motion, I have Ms. Haynes.
Yes, I move to approve the 2024-2025 Financial Futures Committee appointments and changes to the committee's charge as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. I have a motion from Ms. Haynes. I have a second from Mr. Wilbanks. We will then proceed to vote. Mr. Wilbanks, may we have your vote?
I vote yes.
All seven votes in the affirmative, the motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to action item C, consider appointment of the individuals to the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, and appointment of the committee chairpersons and changes to the committee's charge.
Thank you, President Chapa. As you know, we have Mr. Kelly Horn tonight, that does a lot of the assistance in this, but I don't know that there's a need for any presentation at this time. You have the list in front of you and the charge in front of you as well.
Okay, trustees, comments or questions? Seeing none, I have a light from Secretary Richardson.
I move to approve the 24-25 Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee appointments and changes to the committee's charge as presented.
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Fowler. Some motion from Secretary Richardson and a second from Ms. Fowler. We'll now proceed to vote. Mr. Wilbanks, give us your vote.
I vote in affirmative.
All seven trustees voting all in the affirmative, the motion carries unanimously. So, congratulations to our new FFC and CBOC appointees, of which I see, I see three here in the room. We have Ms. Parr, who will be serving as chair of CBOC, Ms. Peznell, returning to CBOC, she's a real trooper, and Mr. DeKine is continuing his service as well. So, thank y'all. We'll now move on. We'll now move on to action item D, consider schematic design for the AISD Security and Transportation Center. Dr. Smith?
It's my pleasure to invite Mr. Horn up here tonight. Mr. Horn will walk us through the schematic design for this important building, as you heard, Mr. DeKine and previous presenters in the past. We have some upgrades that are needed here, we're thankful for the ability to address some of those concerns, and Mr. Horn is here to walk us through that.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. So, this is long-awaited, I think, and this is really the second part to the Service Center that we'll address. The first part of that Service Center work that we undertook years ago was the Food Nutrition Service Center, and so, and you've, many of you have toured that and seen the improvements we've made there. The architect for the Transportation and Security, and most recently, the addition of Health Services. So, this building will be, will house three different groups or three different departments that are under Dr. Hill. And so, tonight, I have Corrigan Architects here to present their SD, or their schematic design, for this particular facility. And Corrigan, most notably, they've done a lot of work for us over the years. They, way back when we built Diane Patrick, they were the architect for Diane Patrick. They also were the architect for Sally McNutt, most recently Thornton Elementary School, and they also did work on this building, as well as the Food Nutrition Service Center. So, they've also helped us with the construction of this bond, and when we began the assessment part of the work that we did way back when in 2018. So, tonight, I want to make sure that I introduce Ms. Susan Smith, she's the principal, or one of the principals for Corrigan that works with us and oversees all of our work, and tonight, I would like to invite Ms. Morgan Howell to come up and walk through the design. She's the lead architect on this project, and I think you'll be pleased to know and see the work that she's overseen at this point, to make sure that all the concerns and questions that our employees, that you, that will utilize this facility, that all of those concerns have been addressed as a part of this design. So, without going any further, I'm going to turn this over to Morgan for just, for her presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, President Chapa, and Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith, for having us here today. We're really excited to show this design to you guys. So, I'll just briefly kind of touch on the project schedule that we have here, outlining kind of some of the bigger milestones for this project. So, SD that just went out at the end of May, we're working towards the DD development now of the design, which you guys will see today. And then, construction documents will be issued at the end of September. The intent is that then the construction would begin at the beginning of January, and final completion would be September 2026. So, starting with the site, because that's such a big part of this project, this is the existing site, it's where the current Arlington ISD Service Center is, so it's kind of to the north of this map that you see with Arkansas to the, or to the south, and Arkansas being to the north, and then this little area that is in yellow is really the area we're focusing on for this project. So, the annex buildings that are highlighted in red dashes to the left, those are all being removed, that currently houses a bunch of the departments, such as security, health, that will be moved into the new facilities once those are built. Additionally, there's some other buildings on that site that will be removed, anticipated and replaced, such as the canopy for the fuel station, replaced with a new canopy, and then to the right, there's that long bar, that's currently a single bus barn, that would be replaced with an open-air double bus barn, and then just other smaller buildings on this site would be removed in order to kind of rework the circulation and make it a little more efficient. So, this is the concrete replacement, all of those buildings would be removed, we'd come back with new concrete, and then this is the very schematic layout of the proposed design. So, the new building would be on that plot of grass area that you saw in the previous, if I move back, so there's just one plot of green grass there on the site, that's where the new building will go, and that will house the Transportation Department, the Security Department, the Health Department, and also a secondary NOC and data center for the district. The existing garage and transportation building would be renovated for the, still to be used for maintaining the buses, and then the office portion would be renovated for the maintenance staff to have office spaces in that area. The blue arrow that you see here is the intended circulation for the buses on the site, and the red is for the staff coming to the site, and the intent there is to kind of separate the circulation between the just cars and the buses, in order to make it more efficient and safer for everyone on the site. And this is the rendered site plan, showing just how the, it would really come together. We anticipate some landscaping to be done due to city requirements, but you'll see there, from the staff parking over there on the left, we have a very significantly designed crosswalk, and where it crosses drives, we're doing kind of the raised tabletop design in order to help, again, with safety for people walking on the site. So, going into the organization of the new building, so we have it color-coded by department. Green would be the Health Department, red is security, purple's technology, blue's transportation, and then anything in yellow is intended to be shared by everyone in the building. So, you'll see there up at the north, that's going to be the public entrance into the building, so that's where people would come if they are not necessarily working in the building, but visiting maybe a department, and they can check in there at a shared reception and then be directed to where they need to go. The Health Department is right up there to the north, and to the south, you'll see there's a big group restroom, that's for everyone in the building, but also located near the training room, which is that big yellow square, and in the event that there is large gatherings there, you'll have that restroom easily accessible. Just moving down that corridor, you'll have the Security Department, and then at the bottom of it, in purple, is that secondary data center location. And the way we are zoning this is we're trying to keep a lot of the circulation for the office staff separate from necessarily the bus driver access, just because we know that there is quite a bit of traffic that comes in with that, and just for efficiency, we wanted to keep those separate, but still both very good experiences. So, with the bus driver access there to the south, it's located there so that it's easily accessible from the bus, buses, but also so that it is easily accessible from the existing transportation building, and it has kind of a synergy between the two. There'll be a group restroom located right off that entrance, so that if anyone wants to come into the building just to use the restroom, they can easily do so, and then also that hallway is designed intentionally to be very long, so that there's plenty of queuing inside the building, so that when people come to pick up their binders, their keys, their tablets, they're able to queue quite a bit in the building where it's conditioned and safe from the elements. And then outside of that, there's also going to be a canopy, so if any queuing has to happen outside the building, they are protected as well. Up there at the north, you'll see that there's a break room, there's actually two, so the one on the right is dedicated to the bus drivers, the one on the left is for the people who are in the office spaces in the other departments, and then the shared space up there at the north, the training room can be used for the bus drivers to eat in, but it can also be subdivided, you'll see a line down the middle, and it can be broken up into two smaller training rooms. So, it gives a little flexibility so that multiple groups can use this throughout the day. Then this is the existing building floor plan, so the garage itself, big blue portion there at the south, the intent there is to renovate it, so new floors, new finishes, new light fixtures, and garage doors, and then to the north, that is the current transportation building, and is being reconfigured so that it has a, bless you, has a larger group restroom, and then also just recapturing some of those spaces for the maintenance staff to have offices of their own, as well as a nicer break room. So, now I will move into the exterior views we've put together for you guys. So, this is the front entry, this is going to be that public entrance. Arkansas is the road that you can kind of see on the left of that picture, just to orient you. So, this would be the main entrance into the building, so we're trying to keep it inviting, open, and really just speak to, you know, Arlington. And then this south portion is the bus driver entrance, so you can see here that covered area I was discussing, trying to make it very large, good coverage, but also welcoming and a place that they could also gather on nicer days with lighting and a fan, and the intent would be that they could maybe have lunch out here, breaks in between shifts. And then the interior space, so kind of focusing on the training room, since that's such a big piece of this building, and how it can be used. So, in this layout, it's showing the operable partition is subdividing the room and how the two sides could be used. So, in this iteration, the left could be used for a training room by one of the departments, but then on the right, it's still open as a break area for the bus drivers or anyone who needs to use it. And then that partition can also sort of, we're looking at using like writing material on it, so that it's just very dynamic and engages the space. The second iteration, still the training room, but just showing how, how it would look if that wall was up and used as a break area, and then this is the third iteration, just showing if it was seated to max capacity with chairs, how many people you could fit in there for a big presentation. And so, these next views are looking at that training room, so this is looking at the training room with that wall up that subdivides the space, and this is how it could look if it, if the wall is brought down, and how it could be turned into a smaller training space. But again, just trying to, you know, make it a really pleasing space, multifunctional, so that it can be used by many groups at the same time. But yes, that is all we have for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Trustees, are there questions or comments? I have Vice President McMurro.
Thank y'all so much for being here tonight and for the great schematic design previews. We always get excited about those, and listening to our drivers, you know, and their concerns and their, their, you know, their thoughts and honest like assessments of our current facility, I can say with good faith that this facility, although we have to wait till 2026, 2026, it addresses so many of those problems. And one question that I did have, because more restrooms, more meeting spaces, more common spaces, I, you mentioned queuing. Are we, I know that our Director of Transportation, they have a very fast, efficient, and they make it work with our current facility, key distribution system. Are we still going to be able to, are we in collaboration with our Director of Transportation to ensure that the new facility will lend itself to this system that they have?
It's a great question, and the answer is absolutely yes. So, they, they will implement new systems with this, obviously to make that even more efficient, but we, on the maintenance and operations side, we use automated key distribution modules or devices, there, there's like large safes on the wall. We'll implement that also at this facility, both for security and transportation, so that security technicians, or security officers, pardon me, and bus drivers will be able to come even after hours and pick up keys or drop off keys securely, without having to worry about having somebody there necessarily. But they, but Dr. Hill and I met with the team on multiple occasions and the architects to design how that will take place, and so they could do it efficiently.
That's wonderful, and the only other question I had was another concern raised to the board from many of our drivers has been the filling stations, usually bottlenecks with the number of vehicles that we have. Are we going to offer additional filling stations, or is there going to be a better way to make sure that fuel is more accessible?
The, we won't, we won't add additional filling stations there, but we'll, we're going, we're going to improve the one that's there, raise the canopy on it, and change the way that drivers come into the, to the compound and the way they queue there. Part of what you see when you look at this is we've taken out a lot of the other buildings that were on the site, what we call annexes two and three, and by removing those, it'll allow us to better queue the buses and not have them stack up. Some of that, too, also is going to be addressed, according to Dr. Hill and Director Gillis, with how they, how they queue or how they have the bus drivers fuel. So, they'll be, they'll be programmed as to when they come in, and so that they don't stack up at the same time and create safety and security problems for, for those that are either additional buses that are coming in or service vehicles and the like. So, so Corrigan's done a really good job with the civil engineer to kind of change the way we bring buses in, and to take that, again, take the traffic that comes from drivers who are coming in, you know, they've been off-duty, coming in a totally different entrance, so that the entrance that's off of South Davis is primarily used for buses and for technician vehicles as they come and go.
And on this, on this rendering you have here, that visitor parking, is that truly going to be visitor parking, or is that also going to include employee parking?
No, that, that's primarily visitor parking, because we expect that we'll have visitors both to say, to the Security Department, to the Transportation Department, and also Health Services. And then we may have, as well, we may have people coming there that are visitors, not necessarily visitors, you know, or they may be district employees, but they're coming to visit us, to maybe pick up a Suburban or things like that. And so, that's, that's designated for visitors, there will be a small amount of office employee parking there, for those that are dedicated there, but then across the, across the drive on South Davis or the entrance to our property, all of that's going to become security and transportation employee parking over there.
This is so exciting, and this is all an essential and very, very long-awaited facility that will be much appreciated and a long pass due for our security and transportation team. They are essential to our district, and we appreciate y'all bringing this presentation to us tonight. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Horn.
We'll go to Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. Finally, finally, this is happening, and I'm thrilled for the departments that are going to receive this new facility, and I want them to know that we listened, we heard what they needed, and we've tried our best to make this happen for them. I just wish we could do it sooner, but it gives us something to look forward to in them, but I know they're going to be thrilled with this, and I love the schematic design, and I'm just so happy, they deserve this. They've been in buildings that are long overdue for a re-haul, and I'm just thrilled that we're doing this. So, thank you both so much.
Move on to Secretary Richardson.
Thanks, Mr. Horn. A couple of questions, just because we've had our bus drivers come here frequently and speak to us, and we've heard the voices and what they've been saying. And when we look at your schematic designs, and one of the things that they had talked about is they come and go throughout the day often, and this seems so simple, we take it for granted, but are there going to be enough refrigerators where they're going to be able to store their lunches?
I'll let Morgan explain how we've broken up the break rooms. I'll let Morgan explain how we've broken up the break rooms for the, I guess you'd say kitchens, if we will, for the larger break rooms.
Yeah, can you show that? Because that is something that they just weren't, they didn't have a place to put their lunches, but yet we have a place for our own students to keep their lunches, but not our employees.
Sure, yeah. So back looking at this floor plan, so I briefly touched on the two smaller, I think I can actually point on this.
Are we looking at these yellow shared?
Yes, these two areas right here, if you see my little pointer. So this one on the right is a full break room for the, intended for the people permanently in the office, and then this one on the right is for the bus drivers only. And so this one on the right, it has two of those large double-door refrigerators in it. It'll have, we're intending three microwaves, it'll have ice maker vending machine, and these were all things that we did discuss when we were meeting with Mr. Horn and Mr. Hill and their team and discussing what do you currently have, what would you need in order to make this work better? So that was kind of how we came to some of those numbers for those appliances with the intent that, you know, it serves everyone that would be using it.
I like seeing that we have alternative seating outside because we are in Texas and we get nice days, more than most, but when they are not able to sit outside, what does the seating look like for them? Because they do have many days where they are sitting, they're getting their work done. Do we have anything besides just hard cafeteria chairs or?
No, primarily, we haven't picked out the furniture at this point, but when we do build these larger training spaces like this, we look at that with the architects as kind of our interior design team and also our purchasing group and then with individual departments. And so we'll meet with, as we get closer to that time, we'll meet with Dr. Hill and Director Gillis, Director Stevens, and with, to talk about what they really need for that space. So we've not determined that yet, but we'll work on that with them.
There, when we talk about, we talked in our last meeting about culture, and we want their satisfaction. We don't just want to say, here's a fridge, you're good, but you know, when they say, we want someplace comfortable to come sit when we're doing this. We are in a hard bus seat all day. I'm not asking that we have loungers for everyone, but if we're going to put nice seating in a training room for visitors, I want to have the same kind of nice seating for our bus drivers when they are not on the road. And I noticed one of the things that they had complained about in their current site was not having restrooms close to their access point. I love that you put this in down at the south side and noticed that, thank you. That is going to be, they are going to be so glad to have something that they can get to quickly and easily with their schedule. And pivoting off of that just a little bit, looking at where we are going to do the remodeling, these buildings that you, it's at the site analysis, we looked at the red, the orange dotted buildings that currently house our security offices. So where will our security offices be moving in the meantime? Because you're taking out?
They'll stay, they'll stay. So we've built this bond, when we built this bond program, we phased everything such that we could sequence this new build and leave the existing facilities in place while we did that. So this will take a similar type of approach that we took with the Web Elementary School, for example. Even when you look at the current facility that Corrigan's doing for us with Joey Rodriguez, everything is always done with the intent to leave people in place where they're at, if at all possible. So what they'll do is, since we purchased that small amount of acreage there in the very beginning of this bond program where Morgan mentioned the green space, we'll put the new building there, that will be built, and as it's finished, once it's completed, then we'll move everyone over and then we'll come up, then we'll go back to the other side, we'll demolish or raise all those structures, and then we'll do all the site and civil work to that. So we'll have the new facility, she mentioned earlier, September 2026 final completion. We'll finish the building earlier, move people over, and then the kind of a second phase will be complete, the last part of the site and civil part of the project.
We heard earlier from Mr. DeKine and CBOC and inflation and things changing. Is there anything missing that we had to cut out due to the rising costs that originally had been included in the scope of work?
No, in fact, we added on this particular project.
Tell me more about that.
Yeah, so this, so number one, we included health services. That was a kind of a late request. Health Services works very closely with Dr. Hill's departments in a lot of ways, and it just made sense, that synergy to have them in the same building with security and transportation. It also brings them closer to maintenance and operations as well. So most of our auxiliary services are on that site, if not all. And so that was an add to bring health services in as well. There's, you know, we weren't always certain that we would keep all aspects of the current garage, but we can and we can make that more functional for the mechanics, because we don't often talk about them, but they work, they're the second and third shifts, they're the graveyard shift, you know? So they're there oftentimes when no one else is, other than, say, security and some of our maintenance team. So that, the work that Corrigan was able to incorporate there on that building to keep everything and do some additional renovation to that facility to make it more functional for them was an add. There's other parts of this relative to paving that, they're not glamorous, but we hear from our bus drivers a lot about, you know, on asphalt roads where potholes occur, right? It's jarring to hit those, and so, and it happens even on our compounds, so we're always doing that work. So there's a lot more paving included in this, additional landscaping. And then two, probably one of the biggest things, but it's, it may seem a little insignificant as well, but a secondary NOC, or Network Operations Center. We work very closely with Eric Upchurch and his team to incorporate that secondary Network Operations Center so that if, for example, there was ever a catastrophic storm that hit our current center at the CTC area or DiPert, then we would have a backup. And I probably can't do it justice like Eric could if he was speaking to it, and if you hear something, Eric, you come on up. But the intent is to give him a backup so that if something happened there that he would have, the network would continue to function as well. That, something could happen there catastrophic, and we'd have the CTC. So with what we're doing here, plus the rework of the fiber network around the district, everything that Mr. Upchurch and we have done is to try to build in kind of a backup, you know, so that we don't ever lose that connectivity. And then, so, and that's all included within really what we call the storm shelter portion of the building, and Morgan didn't hit on it, but she can bring that back up and we'll talk to that point too. But there is a, there is a portion of this building that is a, that's a storm shelter portion, not necessarily for, to house people or house a whole bunch of people, but we have a requirement by the city and by the fire department in particular to make sure that our safety and security networks, our cameras, our burglar alarms, our, even things down to monitoring freezers and cooler temperatures are all housed within what we call the storm shelter, which has a backup generator, and it will operate even in a catastrophic situation where we might have a class five tornado. So do you want to show them that, Morgan?
Yeah, so if you can see my little red dot, so this area over here in this corner, kind of with the thicker black line around it, is that area that Mr. Horn is discussing. So in there, we have that secondary data center as well as the SOC and the EOC for the security departments, and they're all within that hardened shell, storm shelter.
One of the things I want to say thank you to is the fact that the equity that we see in this building, and what I mean by that is we talked about, we want equity in our schools, that every student is proud, every teacher's proud. I want all of our staff to be proud where they work, and we come here and we get to work in this big, beautiful building, and it's wonderful. I will tell you, I eat lunch two out of seven days at a Mexican food restaurant just down the street. This building that's currently there doesn't look anything like this. It doesn't look like a place that somebody's going to be proud to say, that's where I work, that's where I go. And so to know that, you know, we look at this beautiful drawing of this building of what they're going to get to walk into, they're going to get to show their family, this is where I go, this is where I spend my time, this is where I invest with my students. Thank you for giving us equity in this building, that it's not just the admin building that we all get to be proud of, but it's everywhere in the district. And I want our drivers and our other auxiliary staff to have that same feeling when they go to work and to know that we invest in them because they invest so much in our kids. Thank you.
Let's go to Mr. Mike.
Hey, first I'd like to say thank you for the presentation. This is very well thought out. And it's so thought out that there's a portion that's there that says future expansion. It just, if you could, you're probably not prepared to speak on that, but it caught my eye.
Surprise, right, everybody? So this is part of our, of the district's master plan, you've heard that mentioned, you heard Mr. DeKine talk about it earlier, and when we planned this portion, the 2019 bond, if you remember, part of what I presented to the board back then was that we looked at the district from the standpoint of a master plan and developing it so that we knew what we would do in the future and potentially a second and a third bond program, because we have needs all of the district to consider replacing facilities. We have great facilities, but they're aging, and buildings aren't made to last, you know, 100 years necessarily. And technology's changed, and mechanical systems have changed tremendously over the years. A lot of our schools are built very close to roadways that weren't as busy as they are today, right? So when you look at a school like Blanton that sits right on a roadway, on a major roadway, on Collins, we have a plan to take that facility and not necessarily raise the entire facility, but keep the additions we've made over the years that were good and rework and raise some of the older portions that are close to the road and move them further away. So the point, the point I'm trying to get is, is we've looked at every facility in the district and tried to look to see where, what we might do with that in the future, whether we're going to keep it, whether it has great bones and we can renovate it deeply and make it functional again, or whether it needs to be consolidated with another and built in a different way, perhaps even a slightly different location like we've talked about with South Davis. And so when we looked at this, there's, this is a very large complex, and if you've never been to our service center, again, it houses most all of our auxiliary services, and we've only addressed the north end at this point. To the left, the plan left there that you're talking about, Mr. Mike, that's our food nutrition service center. And we have a second distribution center for the food nutrition service group that's on Green Oaks in the south part of town that has mostly dry goods and things that don't need to be refrigerated there. And so right now, we're a little less efficient than we'd like to be, and so Mr. Lewis does a great job, as noted earlier, he really does, to bring all of the food products and all of the dry goods and plates and napkins and forks and knives and that sort of thing together, but he's doing it from remote facilities. And previously, he was doing it with a woefully undersized freezer and cooler. So in the very beginning of this bond, early, one of the very first projects Corrigan actually worked on for, with us, was to add a freezer-cooler addition to this facility for Mr. Lewis. But we also, when we tore out the old, the one that was, that was not functioning properly, we planned immediately as part of this bond and future bonds to bring, ultimately bring the dry goods warehouse or distribution center north to this particular site and so that he can be efficient, and everything he does is out of one center and not two, not being displaced like that. So we very purposefully have planned in this portion of the work to carve out and preserve a place where we know that he'll have a dry goods distribution center connected straight across to the dock that he uses for all of his frozen and refrigerated items so that he can operate more efficiently. So, and we tried to do that at all of our facilities, but that's what that's about.
I'm good, that's good.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Choppa. And in typical Corrigan fashion, not only did you take into consideration all of the pressing needs for these departments, specifically transportation, you did so in a beautiful manner. As always, I've always been impressed with the work you guys have done for the district. And Mr. Horn, I think you left off one important one, and that was the addition at Lamar High School. So we got to give him full credit for that as well. So thank you for everything that you've done. Some of my questions have been answered. The future expansion, I really appreciate the thought. I thought we already had a secondary NOC for resiliency of our network services, but I guess this is the, we don't, and this will be our first backup network operating center.
Our secondary, our secondary NOC to this point has been at the former administration building, the Count's Building, and that building, that building is being, it's in the process of planning for being raised right now. And so Mr. Upchurch worked with me and his team particularly to move that temporarily, to move a lot of those functions over into our Annex Two and Three buildings temporarily. And then, and a lot of that was done with the intent to bring it to that site, bring the network and the fiber optics to that site, knowing that we were going to put this new secondary NOC there. So it was a, it wasn't a move that was gratuitous. We actually planned that as a part of this as well.
Great, great. And I really appreciate the comments from Ms. Richardson as well on the equity and, you know, as I said, it's a beautiful building. I think it's something that provides equity to our, all of our employees, especially our transportation employees who have felt kind of left out for so many years. But one of the comments that she made, she was a little concerned about hardened surfaces for them to sit down for in the break room. And if I heard you correctly, you said that far right training room area, right off of their break room is intended for them to have lunch in, is that correct?
That would be correct, yeah. So the intent of that training room is that it would be a break room function for the bus drivers. It's, that's kind of the first and foremost priority for that space, but it has the ability to also be transformed and captured by the other departments in that building for meeting and training purposes.
And then, no, I love the flexible use of space, but number one, as Ms. Richardson pointed out, it gives the, it gives them, from what I see in the pictures, a very nice lunchroom to have lunch in, that is probably one of the nicest in the district, bar none in, knowing the work that Corrigan does, I'm sure it will be. So the final question I have for you, Mr. Horn, is I believe a few years ago, when one of the burger joints on Cooper just east of there was hit by a tornado, we had a pretty significant wind and hailstorm that came through and essentially went over that property, if I remember correctly. And living in the state of Texas where severe weather is constantly a threat, especially hail, and it seems like the hail is getting larger, I appreciate the fact that we've added the canopy space, but it looks like it's still just a small percentage of the buses that might be parked there, especially in non-operational times for those buses. What, do you know off the top of your head, what percentage of our bus fleet and other vehicles would be covered by the canopy? And is, are the canopies primarily just for the buses or are they used for our white fleets?
No, the canopies are primarily for our buses, and we would expect that we'll be able to cover them all with this addition that we're making. When you look at that site plan that we're using some older pictures, but we had a larger amount of buses than we're going to have going forward in the future as well. So we've worked closely with Dr. Hill and Director Gillis to make sure that we're accounting for what they want to cover or what they need to cover, both in the way of our smaller short buses that we have and in our standard regularly had larger buses. So we've had a lot more buses on that site, but many of those that you see in the picture are salvaged or will be salvaged at this point, a lot of those that are uncovered.
Okay, great. I know, that's good to hear.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
And you mentioned the fact that that was a break room, you know, kind of a lunchroom space. I want to make sure everybody understands that it'll be used by, and Dr. Hill wanted me to make sure we noted this, it'll be used by multiple groups, so security will be able to have their training meetings there, their larger training meetings, and other things that they might do, employee meetings and so forth, as well as transportation and health services, things like CPR trainings and that sort of thing. So, and this, that facility or that particular training space, a lot like the training spaces we have in this building, the PDC and others, even a recent addition to a facility we have on Green Oaks Boulevard are now able to be reserved by groups all over our district that need larger training spaces, even for us in maintenance and operations to have our training meetings that we have once a month, so.
And possibly even a future board meeting?
You could absolutely do that if you want to.
It sounds like a good spot for a future board meeting. Hint, hint.
Okay.
Mr. Chapa.
I was just saying, I couldn't control your mic, Mr. Wilbanks.
[laughing]
Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. So, in that room where they normally would have lunch, when there's a meeting going on, is there another facility where they can have lunch?
One of the, the great things about this is that, and we've talked about this with the teams, with Dr. Hill and his staff, they get to program that space and, and work together to, to reserve that. And they would work in and around, you know, that sort of thing. That's the one reason why we divide, or why Corrigan, I should, we asked them to, to really, to work on being able to divide that in a productive way so that we wouldn't impact the ability, if they wanted to have lunch, we'd just schedule, we, we'd schedule smaller meetings during that time that could be housed on that, what would be the, really the, the west side of that training space. So, that's the reason for the divide.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have no other trustees with comments or questions. Is there a motion? Mr. Mike?
Yes, I, I move to approve the schematic design for the Arlington ISD Security and Transportation Center facilities as presented.
I have a motion.
I second.
From Mr. Mike, I have a second from Mr. Wilbanks. Uh, trustees will proceed to vote. Mr. Wilbanks, give us your vote.
I vote in affirmative.
All seven trustees vote in the affirmative. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda is a routine part of our meeting where several items are grouped together for consideration all at one time. Trustees, would anyone like to withdraw an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
I have a motion from Secretary Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fowler. That motion is by Secretary Richardson, second from Ms. Fowler. Trustees, vote. Mr. Wilbanks, give us your vote.
I vote in affirmative.
All seven trustees vote in the affirmative. The motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any registered speakers?
Yes, we have one registered speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Mr. Weber, as you come back up tonight, I will read our standard overview, which I know you're familiar with. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You have three minutes to speak, and Ms. Forsberg will notify you via the red light when your time is up. Mr. Weber.
Thank you. Um, the meeting 12 months ago, you started with a budget workshop. And, uh, based on what we said, I believe it was Dr. Smith's idea. And I wanted to give kudos for that. I think it was a real good idea. Unfortunately, I didn't get to watch it live, because when I clicked on the meeting, it was just the regular, standard meeting waiting to reconvene. But when I looked Saturday, I found it on YouTube, so I was able to see that workshop. Uh, just a suggestion, maybe, uh, a budget workshop on the whole budget process, the first meeting of financial futures. Um, a week ago today, y'all had a meeting in the executive session that was going to talk about the handbook some. I, I would hope you remove that three o'clock deadline. I never know what my transportation will be on three o'clock on these meetings, so it's very hard for me to sign up by that three o'clock deadline. Um, the last four elections, school board elections, three of them have had a person win with less than 50%. And that fourth year had two races with only two people, so someone had to get 50%. But in three of those four years, someone won with less than 50%. Is it time to give the citizens a true winner? Can we have a majority vote versus a plurality vote? I would prefer to see a majority vote. And then, uh, I've talked about this before, the last time I spoke, less than a year ago, uh, Toma, Texas Open Meeting Act. In the Texas Open Meetings Handbook, put out, put out by the Attorney General on page 16, actually part of the wording now, it sure makes it sound like your subcommittee meetings should be posted and the public should be able to attend. When I spoke about this before, it was a footnote on the bottom of page 16, but now it's in the actual wording, if you actually look at the, uh, Texas Open Meetings Handbook put out by the Attorney General. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. We'll move on now to superintendent's report. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, trustees and President Chapa. Tonight, I'd like to share some information about exciting news that's happened in our district, talk to you a little bit about superintendent's, uh, investment plan in the first 100 days in, uh, Arlington ISD, and give you a brief overview on goals and feedback that you've provided so far. This is the third and final week of Camp Innovation at the CTC, where more than 800 students from fourth through 10th grade have spent summer days learning about computer programming. They're doing all kinds of fun things, from programming robot dances to flying drones through the building. This is the seventh year our Technology Integration and Innovation Department has run the camp, and it keeps getting bigger and bigger each year because it's so fun and so many kids want to come. The staff and teachers who put this on deserve an enormous thank you. For the first time, we're offering in-person registration assistance for pre-K in the kinder, uh, throughout much of the summer. Families can come to Cook and Educational Center to register for any elementary school in the district and get a tour of a pre-K classroom. We think this is a big help for a lot of our families, and we appreciate our Early Childhood Learning Department for making it happen. You need to get to know, know the name of Fred Threets Jr. Fred is a remarkable rising 11th grader from the Lamar High School P-Tech program. Earlier this year, Lamar competed in the revalidation process to become a national avid demonstration school. During the process, avid staff from various parts of the country visited Lamar's classrooms, met with campus and district staff, and heard from students. They were really impressed with Fred and asked if he would speak at their national conference. Well, earlier today, Fred did just that. He spoke at the National Avid Summer Institute in Dallas, one of only two students selected nationally for the honor. And if you haven't met Fred, you need to spend some time with Fred. He is impressive. It's already time to start thinking about the new school year, and we're excited to announce the 10th Annual Back-to-School Kickoff at AT&amp;T Stadium on Saturday, August 3rd. Registration for the event just opened last week, and already hundreds have signed up to get free backpacks filled with school supplies, free haircuts, vision screenings, and a whole lot more. I want to thank the Gene and Jerry Jones Family, Arlington Youth Foundation for sponsoring this event year after year. After the highlights, I'd like to dive in real briefly to talk about, uh, superintendent investment plan, and we'll click through a few slides. As you know, we, uh, talked previously about investment versus entry, and the idea of investment is learning about the community. We had a presentation to you after March 18th, and so I, I broke three phases in the, in the investment plan, about 33 days each or so. We had a first report in March after the first portion was done. We had, uh, this is the report on the second portion or Phase Two, and then we'll be reporting on Phase Three as we wrap things up in August. As you know, we had four goals for the 100-day investment plan. They're listed there for your perusal pleasure, and, uh, I'll go into some detail on some things coming up here in just a second. Um, let's click to the next slide, please. Uh, Goal One, as we talk about Team of Eight partnerships, so we've continued the individual meetings, uh, with each trustee. Obviously, Mr. Mike just joining the board, we'll start our individual meetings for him. At the time when this was, uh, when we looked back on the second phase of this, we had planned for the Team of Eight. We, as you all remember, we had to postpone the April Team of Eight meeting, and we moved it to June. We have now since completed that, but I'll, I'll touch on that in a little more detail in the future presentation. Um, we've said that we need to continue to engage in the idea of governance and management discussions as a Team of Eight as well, and to keep talking about how we, as a new Team of Eight, continue to, um, work together and balance each other out so that we can function effectively. Plan for shared learning, we've, uh, already started addressing as well with items such as SLI. And I began sharing some readings with you all, I think, with, uh, some of the governance books that I've shared and board bulletins, et cetera. Um, I also have shared at this time with you all the copy of the book that we're working on as a senior staff, The Culture Code, and I know some of you have, uh, been diving into that, and I appreciate your support on that. Um, I also want to note that we're in the process of drafts, drafting those goals. We shifted the transition goals to, uh, district goals for the future. We wanted to make sure we took some, enough time to do that, and I'll touch on that in a little more detail in a couple of minutes. Community engagement-wise, under Goal Two, you can see a bunch of the things that happened during the last phase of this. We actually held the welcome reception, that feels like an eternity ago, but we held the welcome reception during Phase Two. I want to point out a couple of things, um, involvements in, during Phase Two, the What's Your Big Idea event, very thankful for the chamber and their efforts for What's Your Big Idea and how we promote entrepreneurship in Arlington ISD and in our community. We have some exciting ideas to build off of for the future there. And the Arlington Education Foundation works tirelessly for our students in Arlington ISD. Thankful to be able to go to Six Flags with them, to be able to, uh, experience some of their bigger events, to talk to them on a more regular basis. That's been outstanding. As you see, there are a lot of, uh, non-checkmarks, I guess the best way to put it, on Goal Three, under Team Development. And I, as I mentioned during the last time I presented on my investment plan, I think these are all ongoing things that need to continue. I don't know that you'll see a completion on a lot of these things. Um, we need to continue to hear and listen to and work with staff and teammates across the district, and I think those things will all continue. As you, um, know, I've already shared with you in the past, but I've begun some small group meetings with principals, obviously also visiting their campuses as well, and those have been extremely fruitful for, uh, feedback for me and also for a focus on how we work together to best serve our students for the future. Finally, in the effective transition, I had mentioned The Culture Code. You know, uh, we're working on that as a senior staff and trying to make sure that we're really talking about culture, not being a poster that you put on the wall, but culture being the actions that we undertake day in and day out. Starts with Board of Trustees and Superintendent, how we function as a Team of Eight. But our senior staff, our principals, our key leaders throughout the system are the ones that bring culture to life, and it's about our day-to-day interaction. So, we had, uh, outstanding discussion today on that. I know that this is really, uh, reporting on Phase Two, but just sharing, we've had some outstanding discussions on The Culture Code such, so far, and really talking about the culture that we want to create for the future in Arlington ISD. Um, finally, the last thing I'll say on this before they click to the other slide is that we want to make sure that we continue, um, working with that senior staff and working with all of our team to ensure that our transition is effective as possible. As you know, I've, uh, picked your brains on a regular basis about advice that you have for me. I've picked our former superintendent's brain on advice that he has for me. And also, uh, during this Phase Two, I began meeting with some previous board members just to know and understand more about the community so I could get a good sense of what's happening in our school district. We began planning on the reorganization and, uh, will execute some reorganization strategies this summer. Finally, key priorities that I, I mentioned and that all of our goals are aligned with are those four things that you see in front of you. I believe it's been a, a very fruitful, um, experience so far for me to, to focus on those priorities and, as I enter Arlington ISD. And then, finally, as we look forward into Phase Three, the plan, there's a few things that, uh, I'm working on now and that I'll be addressing over the summer months here before I report out to you again. Um, we'll continue our postponed discussions on the handbook and goals. Obviously, we started that recently, and we'll continue that and, and hopefully land that. We'll initiate those actions for reorganization, and we're, we're changing up some meeting structures and, uh, ensuring that we have the right meetings at the right time to ensure the right information for our system. And then, finally, um, I think it's, it's super important to point out Bullet Two there that we're, uh, getting ready to lift up, and that's to ensure that we, through the, the fall, the early fall, lift up the voice of every employee, not just teachers, not just administrators, but every employee in Arlington ISD. And I'm excited to tell you, we've got a good plan to do that coming forward. Any discussion on the, uh, investment plan before I discuss, uh, where we stand on goal development real quickly? All right, so let's talk goal development. I've asked you all for some feedback tonight. I wanted to share the themes that I've gotten from your feedback real briefly. There are six things that are listed there, and again, many of you word things a little bit different, but these are the themes that came out so far in this. Academic progress, obviously, safety and discipline in our, uh, school system, culture improvement, student experiences. And how I would describe a student experiences are the, the offerings, experiences, and, um, ability for students to engage in something that they become passionate about. So, that's what I would say student experiences are. Professional learning and marketing offerings. I, I believe that that should say, uh, or I should explain that. Marketing offerings means marketing the things, the great things that we do in the school district in a different way. So, it's making sure that our community is, uh, well-informed about that. Thank you for the initial feedback. From there, what we'll do is we'll begin, uh, picking your brain about what some of those categories mean to you, and the goal is to be able to have you actually articulate what you want to achieve for the future. So, if we talk about culture improvement, I'm going to ask you to actually describe what's the culture that you want to create in Arlington ISD. That's our aspirational goal that we'll shoot for. From there, we will develop a target that we will work to achieve over the next school year, and that's what we'll hold ourselves accountable to and report out to you according to, uh, board meetings in the future. So, those are the next steps coming up. Look for additional information coming from me soon.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to school board reports. Do I have trustees with reports this evening? Ms. Haynes.
Yes. So, a little over a week ago, I attended our AISD Fire Academy's Burn Week. Um, there are some pictures that Spence has, that he's going to share. Um, but I attended the AISD Fire Academy Burn Week. Um, this week is for the students who were completing their first year in the Fire Academy, so juniors, completing their junior year, and it was an opportunity for them to train and to practice the, the things and the skills that they had been taught throughout their entire first year, and to do it onsite with actual conditions of a fire. Um, they trained at the TCC campus for the week, and then on Friday evening, they invited family and friends to come out to the facility off of Green Oaks, uh, near Arkansas-ish, and to watch them actually demonstrate those skills to their friends and family. So, it was pretty incredible to see these, these young men and women out there, um, rappelling out of windows, rescuing babies from actual fires happening, um, putting out fires, climbing on roofs, and cutting holes in the roofs to release, um, the smoke and the pressure out. I mean, it was incredible. Um, and so, these students will move on into their second year, and they'll learn, um, they'll have their hazmat training next year, their EMT certificate, and then they will graduate and be able to take the state test and to go into the workforce as firefighters. So, incredible program we have here in the district, and it was an honor to get to see them practice these skills in person, so.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Anyone else have trustee reports tonight? Mr. Wilbanks, do you have one? No. Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider this evening?
We do not at this time.
Okay. Normally, we would end our meeting, uh, there, but tonight we do have a student discipline appeal, and that will need to be held in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act. And so, therefore, at this time, I will ask anyone who is not, uh, permitted to be here for the disciplinary appeal to please, uh, leave the chambers. Okay, we're going to come back into open session briefly. Um, we do have a student discipline appeal as our last item on the agenda tonight. Uh, the meeting will be, uh, the hearing will be conducted in closed session, and, um, I have a script to read for that, but at this time, we will now enter a closed meeting for the purpose of deliberating on matters involving the discipline of a public school child and consulting with its attorney under the authority of the Texas Government Code Sections 551.082A and 551.071. The time is 9:21 on June 18th, 2024, and we will now meet in closed session. Okay, we ended closed session at 10:05, and it is now 10:08, and we will reconvene in open session. The board took no other action in closed meeting. The board has heard the students' appeal of the discipline decision. Do I hear a motion or discussion at this time? Do I hear a motion or discussion at this time? Secretary Richardson.
Michaela, Mrs. Kerr, thank you guys for being here tonight. I know this has to be hard. I have a daughter a little bit younger than you, and so when I look at you, I think about how hard it must, it would be for her to come here and do this. So, it's not lost on me, the fact that you guys have been here tonight. And, one of the things you need to know, that in our position as trustees, Michaela, is we don't get to vote on what your action was. What you did was right or wrong. We are not here as your judge and jury. What we have to decide, and what we were charged with tonight, was asking, did your staff at Lamar High School, did they uphold the policy? That's what we're here to judge. So, whatever happens here, I want you to know, we're not judging you, we're not judging what your high school career is, we're not judging if you're going to go on to be a productive member of society, we're not going on to judge if you're going to have a good summer or not, or if you're a good daughter. I know, by looking at you, you're a good human being. That's what I do know. Now, we're going to make a decision about a policy. You are not a policy, Michaela. Mrs. Kerr, your daughter is not just regulated to a policy, but that is what we're going to vote on tonight. But hear us say, we know that you're more than this, okay? After reviewing the appeal record and videos, and finding that the administration has not violated any law or policy, I move to uphold the administrative decision.
And I'll second. Trustees will move to vote. Mr. Wilbanks, please give us your vote.
I vote to uphold the decision by staff.
All seven trustees have voted to uphold the decision of staff. The administration's decision is upheld, and at this time, at 10:10 PM, we will close the meeting.[1772.86][1772.86][music][1773.86]